Good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and get started. Thank you for coming to the Maybellton City Planning Commission meeting for this evening. We'll begin, just first off, just a reminder to complete silence your devices for the duration of the meeting. First thing we would like to do is seat our alternate members, Commissioner Jake Lake and Commissioner Lewis as voting members for this evening's meeting. We're going to have an opening prayer by Commissioner McLean and then the pledge led by Commissioner Lewis.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this evening and grateful for the fortunate circumstances that we gather. We are mindful of the needs that exist within the city and we pray that, as we discuss those needs, that we can be mindful to those parties that are affected. We pray that we can do what's best for the city and have clear minds and clear direction with regards to what we should do. We love you, Lord, and we're grateful for how blessed we are and these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. We'll just move right into our agenda items. The first two items are consent items, the first being Planning Commission meeting minutes, and the second item is consideration of a request for a conditional use permit to establish a ranch lot for one new home on a five acre parcel located approximately 1400 south and 1500 east. The applicant is David Brogdon, JV Crookside Ranch, LLC. So how the consent items will work, so those two items will be lumped, could be lumped together. I'll just read again for those who are new to consent items, the description of how we handle consent items. Items on a consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any of the items be considered individually for purchases of all commission discussion and or public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. So what we'll do is we'll ask the commissioners to let us know if there's any, either of those two items that we want to pull for discussion, and then we'll ask for everybody's hand from the audience if anyone wants to discuss that item. Commissioners, any of those two?
You want to pull two?
Yeah. Okay. Anybody from the audience would like to pull either of the two items to discuss? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and do it, and then what we'll do is look for a motion for item number one, the Planning Commission meeting minutes approvals from September 12th.
I move that we approve the minutes from September 12th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to item number two. We'll turn the time over to Sean.
So did you just have a question, or do you want to...
I just want to flesh out a little bit, just the letter and easement potentially, Sean. It sounds like there's just been questions about easement, the own and property, Brogdon property, how many houses.
Yeah, so I'll go through the application. So the applicants, the applicants have a five acre parcel. It's split between A2 and CE1 zones. There's no frontage to the parcel. It's accessed by a driveway that has an easement from 1600 south. They're requesting a conditional use permit for a ranch lot to construct one dwelling on the property. So this is the, sorry, that's too dark on the back sheet. The area highlighted in yellow is the area to the right is in the CE1 zone, area to the left is in the A2 zone. And it's accessed from a driveway easement that's accessed from 1600 south. And so the easement, there was a new easement that was, that replaced an old easement that was just recorded earlier this year, and the easement indicates that it's to provide access to these parcels. And so in staff's mind, the easement complies with the city standard. If there's dispute between the owner of the property and the person that granted the easement, that would be a civil matter that really would be for them to determine. The ranch ordinance allows for one home on a lot that does not have frontage if it's five acres or more and at least two acres of that is in A2 zone. The property has no frontage. It cannot extend the frontage to it without the purchase, the contract to purchase additional property. And the applicants provide proof of easements and emergency vehicle access. And so in staff's evaluation, it does comply with those standards.
So is, obviously, this new easement that's in place, Ronnie and, or Monty and Rixah would have to agree to that new easement, I assume, right?
They were the grantors.
They were the grantors, okay. So just my, my interest is, it sounds like either there's been a misunderstanding and they don't know what they signed off on by virtue of their letter from Kerry, or something else happened. So I'm just trying to get to the bottom of why all of a sudden there's been a recorded easement, but now the omens are saying, "We don't want this." And maybe this has nothing to do with the complaining commission, but I'm just trying to get all the cards on the table.
I have a quick question about the easement. There was a prior easement already.
There was, and what, there was some dispute between the two parties regarding the intent of that easement, and so there's been discussions for years. Bishop Brogdon can probably speak to this better, obviously better than I can, but there was a settlement recently and that easement was recently recorded.
Okay.
So like you said, it's, any arguments towards this letter is more of a civil dispute. From our point of view, we're strictly looking at it as complying with the ranch lot ordinance and based on staff's recommendation that that is correct.
It does, yeah. You're certainly welcome to ask staff to kind of give any insight, if you want any additional insight.
Mr. Brogdon?
We litigated for two years. It was ready.
Would you mind coming to the mic, please?
We litigated this for two years. It was ready to go to court, and Monty decided he didn't want to go to court, so they worked out the easements to both properties. I own two properties. There's the north property and the south property. The easement covers both properties. We had an original easement in 12 just for this property, and he tried to say that that superseded the easement to the other properties. But I didn't own the other properties at the time, so it had nothing to do with the other properties.
And this easement's already been recorded?
It's been recorded, and we spent two years litigating. It's right ready to go to court, and he said...
All right. All right, thank you for clarifying. Just another clarification for me. Kerry is, is his son.
Yeah. Yeah, Monty's not here.
Kerry's not here. So Sean, have you talked to Kerry at all?
I have.
Since he wrote this?
He's, he's contacted me yesterday, and I explained to him the situation. I understood it and why staff was recommending it, that we were, and he sent the email after that.
Okay. So is it a big enough concern that you'd rather continue it so that we can let them make sure that their, their agreement's fully...
I mean, aside from like pulling the easement documentation and seeing what the terms of the agreement are, that's...
I've got the easement here. I didn't include it. I mean, it seems pretty clear. It identifies all parcels in the description.
Yeah.
I think it really is a...
If they've already signed off on it and it's been recorded, then it sounds like you're misintergreding what's going on, but regardless, that doesn't fall on the marshal or something. Okay, then we'll bring in the motion.
Make a motion that we recommend approval to the CCM for a request for a conditional use permit to establish...
This one would be just, you are...
Oh, we are, yeah.
So it'd be just to approve it.
I make a motion that we approve the request for a conditional use permit to establish a ranch lot for one new home on a five acre parcel located at approximately 1400 south and 1500 east with the recommendations and conditions from staff. So no conditions.
No conditions. Motion. I'll second it. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number two passes. Item number three is consideration of a request to rezone approximately nine acres of property located at 2400 south and Highway 89 to a mix of general commercial and industrial manufacturing, and to amend the general plan to include a general commercial reservation for a portion of the property. Turn the time over to you, Sean.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair members of the commission. So this is approximately nine acres in size of the property. It's formerly known as the Olson Sheep Farm. You're very aware of the, of the site. It includes a single family dwelling and a number of agricultural buildings. The northeast corner of the site already is zone general commercial. It's a one acre corner. It's zone general commercial, and the remaining eight plus acres is zone A2. So the request is to extend the general commercial zoning south along the Highway 89 frontage, and then to rezone the remaining property to the west industrial, industrial and manufacturing. This is the existing zoning. If you look back on the screen, area in black is the application, this first application. We'll be discussing this southern piece as part of the next application. You can see the current corner there is zone commercial. Property directly across the street is commercial, and those two, just a little bit further south are zone commercial as well. Everything else being zoned A2. This is the general plan. This parcel and the parcel to the south are all zoned, are general plan for industrial. That's primarily based on the location along the highway and the train tracks. As you can see, this, this property bottleneck's quite a bit because it gets close to the train tracks, and so that was originally the purpose for identifying this as an industrial parcel, just the limited other uses that may be desirable with those constraints. Highway 89 frontage is all shown as potential for general commercial, and then the yellow is medium density residential, low density residential. This is what the applicant would be proposing, would be the frontage, again, would be all general commercial with the industrial proposed towards the west. They have included a concept plan. We've indicated that this is, it is very conceptual in nature. I think the applicant's intent is to try to determine if the zoning is appropriate and to then be able to determine what uses in that zone would be most viable. Right now, the concept plan shows the potential for an office building on the corner with some mixed use along the frontage, south of that with kind of a warehouse industrial to the west. They included a couple of photographs of potentially what they may be looking to do. This would be the office or the mixed use type plan with this type of use for the warehouse. So as I indicated, the concept shows potential uses. The planning commission, if the rezoning is approved, really should assume that any of the uses allowed in the general commercial or the industrial could be allowed if the rezon is approved. So the commission, if you're uncertain about certain uses, there are stipulations you could add as part of the condition, or if you wanted a more concrete development plan, that's also something that you could request as part of your review. With that, what I, what staff would recommend is to be able to have the applicant speak to this issue, and then we can discuss it when we can move forward.
Okay, so that's what we'll do, is we'll open for questions for the commission to either Sean or the applicant, if the applicant would mind coming forward. Then, then after we discuss that, then we can open it up to public comment.
Do you want me to go after?
No, go, go ahead. Come on up.
And maybe we have questions again after public comment?
Yeah. Good evening. I don't know where to start on this. This is definitely a conceptual plan.
Could you state your name for the record, sir?
Ryan Luke. So we are the owners currently of this property. It was recently acquired through some financial unrest by the previous owner, which is Scott Olson. I'm sure you're familiar with this piece of property. It's been there a long time with a lot of outbuildings. We're in quite a bit of despair. The building, the, I should note that the house that's down in the bottom, the south corner there, the mixed use area, had a recent fire last year. It's in pretty bad shape as well. I think, like, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to get some kind of concept plan together so that we can clean up that area. It's pretty rough. But, that being said, this is kind of the general plan, just to kind of give you an idea of what potentially could, could happen there based on, you know, the rezoning state place. I think we're trying to keep everything in conjunction with what you've already done along the road there. I don't think we're trying to change anything dramatically. I can't, I can't go and say, "Hey, this is what's going to happen," because we don't really have any indication of where this is going and how soon it could happen. It could, we could be the builders of this, or we could be selling it to somebody else. So I, I don't know if there's a good answer to how soon this is going to happen, when it's, you know, what it's going to look like. That could change over time. But I think, given what we've kind of shown here, it gives you a pretty good idea of what I think could happen at some point. I can't tell you right now that we're, we've leased back the space to Scott for, it looks like a couple more months, and then I, I think we're going to start picking and trying to get some of those buildings knocked down and removed and clean up the site in general. There's just a lot going on there that needs to be fixed, cleaned up. So maybe that kind of answers some of the questions. Do you have any, any questions for us?
So you, you indicated that you don't really know exactly what, what's going to go in, and this is kind of in a concept of what you might...
Yeah, I mean, I can't say, you know, a professional building's going to be what's going to happen on that corner for sure. I mean, if we have somebody come by and say, "Hey, look, we want space. We need a building of some sort," then, then obviously we present that to the city and try to build something there. But this is, this is a pretty good idea, I think, of what could potentially happen there, along, along all of Highway 89, honestly, you know, in that GC area. So, you know, the next door neighbor, he's got an application as well, and I heard it from him tonight, Red Robinson. He, he's got some ideas maybe for his piece as well. Industrial wise, you know, originally we came in, we were talking about doing some, some commercial on the front, multifamily in the back. It didn't sound like that was going to happen, so we restructured it to this to kind of fit the parameters of what your general plan is. I think it's a really good spot for this because you've got the railroad on the one side, and then you've got Highway 89. And I, I don't think single family's a good option there, in my opinion, in general. And I do think that, obviously, getting that place cleaned up in general is going to look a lot better. That's, that's a well-traveled road. It needs some attention down there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think any of us disagree that that, generally, that industrial and commercial is a, is a good fit. I think, I think our, at least for me, my perspective and what, what I've heard from citizens in that area is, is what type of business would be going in there. So I think that's something we're a little bit more concerned about.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if I can answer that right now. Obviously, you know, whatever can fall within those, those particular zoning parameters. I mean, you have the same, you have the same opportunity across the street right now as, you know, we do on the corner with, with that red GC zoning. So it, it's hard for me to say. I don't think this is going to happen very quickly, to be honest with you. Maybellton doesn't have the growth rates we're seeing in the north end of the county, but it, it's something we're going to start picking at, and we may be the guys to build this, or we may sell it to somebody else. So this stuff's for sale right now. If somebody wants to protect this piece and make it a historical sheep farm, they're welcome to come talk to us. We'd love to sell them. So it's a hard, it's a hard answer, you know what I mean? Right now, I think we're just looking and saying, "Hey, look, let's clean up the zoning. You've got, it's a hodgepodge in there a little bit. I think your general plan is a good plan. I think let's just, let's fix it, and then let, let's get some things cleaned up, and then as things start to happen, then we can come in and present you with a better idea of, hey, here's what we're going to do with this particular piece, this piece, this piece." It gives you a good idea, I think, of what is potential.
Yeah. How amenable would you be to, though, if we were to say, "Okay, we're fine with, with any kind of commercial, but we, but we put some kind of stipulations or conditions on, on a certain type of commercial business that goes on there?"
It kind of depends.
So that, would that be a deal breaker for you?
Well, it could be. I mean, it, it depends, but I'm going to probably ask you to stick with what's in the code. I mean, if the code's there, that's what it's meant for. If you're going to, if you're going to tell me, "Hey, I only want you to build single story down," you're going to make everybody else do it all on Highway 89. You know, you know what I mean? But that's a hard sell for me, isn't it? I think, you know, I can't answer that again, but it depends. If you, you know, if you don't like what I'm presenting, you tell me why, and we can figure it out. I think it's, it's doable. But I'm not planning on going down there and building something crazy either. I think it's going to fit with what you've got already going on on Highway 89. You've got some commercial buildings that look really nice, and I think anything that's new and built along there has that approach. I'm not, you know, I, I don't intend to build steel buildings and throw up a bunch of, you know, big industrial buildings down there. I don't think that's a great look, but that's what your industrial zoning calls for, too. I mean, you've got some of that already going on down through there. So again, it's, it's hard to say, but my intention is not to make it look worse, maybe a little tighter.
Sean, can you elaborate a little bit on approved uses of GC1 and IM1? It's in business.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, the general commercial zone is exactly that. It's general commercial, so it allows for a pretty broad range. You could have professional office, you could have mixed use, you could have retail. I think the likelihood of, of this being a retail space in any, in the near future is probably not likely. So my estimation would be, yeah, the most likely scenario would be a professional office or those type of lower impact uses. But that doesn't mean that somebody wouldn't propose something that, that needs the general commercial standard to come forward. The thing that, that staff likes about zoning the frontage commercial is that the design standards in the commercial zone are higher than they are in the industrial. I think it blends itself to a more aesthetic street style. And the buildings would be pulled closer to the street with the parking towards the rear, to the side, to avoid, you know, impacts from, from parking lights or whatnot from acres. I think it's a...
And I like industrial in the back because, like you said, you're sandwiched between Highway 89 and the train tracks. It's kind of dead space. I think it's a great spot for that. I think this, this fits a parameter where you got, you know, maybe a small plumbing company or, or somebody that needs warehouse space, and they can come in and they can park their stuff. Any of the stuff that I'm, I'm presenting here, my intention would be to not have any outside storage in this area. I think outside storage can get away from you, even though, you know, your, your code would call for that. Most of the stuff, we, we build a similar product up in the north end of the county. All of those buildings have a parking lot and then inside storage, so it really keeps the stuff kind of tidy. Looks a little bit better. It's a cinder block style of that, you know, where it doors, kind of a, kind of a, I don't know, a small warehouse office commercial style look. But this is some stuff that's going on in Park City. I think it looks really nice up there. It's got a good look from the, from the street view. Again, I, I sympathize with, you know, the, the owners around us. Anytime there's change and things start to happen, I can totally understand that they may not love it, but again, I mean, a land's for sale. If they want to protect it or whatever, we have to sell it. But I think we're trying to improve what's going on down there. That Olson farm, it's gone a long time without a lot of help, and I think it, it needs some help. That, that house up front, that's another moving variable. You know, we've got some things there that we've got to figure out. I don't, I don't know what to do with that. It's probably more valuable the way it is still than knocking it down, but depending on, you know, whatever kind of things happen, maybe somebody comes in and wants to expand down that Highway 89 or some more of that commercial space. I think that potentially could be knocked down. I think it'd look better on the ground than what it is right now, especially with the fire damage inside. But again, it's kind of hard to say. It's a little too early, but our intention, again, mostly, you know, by being here, is let's get it rezoned. Let's get in a position where we can do some things, but let's get it cleaned up, and then we'll come back and show you, "Hey, here's the next part." All of that stuff is not going to happen all at the same time. This is going to have to happen in phases of some sort.
Makes sense.
So maybe we ought to let, you know, some of the neighbors have some concerns, you know, discuss that, and if there's some things that we can help and maybe help with.
Any other questions, really quick?
Thanks.
Thanks. Any questions for staff? Okay, we'll open it up to public comment. Please remember to keep your comments brief, and if somebody's already come up and stated the exact same thing that you wanted to say, just kind of reiterate that you agree with that and, and try not to be redundant. But at that, we'll open it up to public comment. Please, please come to the mic if you want to speak, and please state your name for the record.
My name's Brent Nelson, and I'm just kind of across the street to the south side of the operation. It's just there. And I guess if you wouldn't mind explaining to me just a little bit what, as far as the industrial and manufacturing, what would that entail on some kind of, what, what kind of, would that amount take place as far as...
So it's light industrial, so it's not anything that would be like you would imagine on Geneva Road or something like that, right? It's field production. It's more like what you see along Albee Drive. So Albee Drive in Maybellton now is, you may have a cabinet manufacturer, or furniture, or some smaller scale industrial type pieces. But there's a, there's a pretty, pretty broad variety of items that they would potentially do. We can provide that list to you.
So it's not light industrial?
It is light.
It would be considered light industrial? Okay, I just, I just didn't understand exactly what that would mean as far as that. And then another question I have, where we are along that Highway 89 and then the intersection of 2400 south and 2400, what would be, 89 and then 2400 south, Highway says, I guess what I'm referring to. Would there be some possibilities of having to change the width of that road in order to accommodate something like this?
On 2400 south? Yeah, so what will happen is, if, if the rezon gets approved, applicant would then need to come back with a, a plan of how the property is going to be subdivided, and then how the buildings were going to look at site plan review. And at that time, the city engineer will work with the applicant on the, on the cross section that the road needs to be, but yes, 2400 south would include improvements. So you did curb better sidewalk improvements on, on both of those, 89 and...
Okay, so I, I guess just, you just aren't familiar with all this. Would, would that consideration affect my side of the road and my property on that side?
So not you...
Are you on the east side?
I'm on the north side.
This is you here?
I'm on the north side.
So the only, the only time that would affect it is if and when your property develops or does something different. Those improvements would be required upon your side, but nothing, this, this project won't require you to do anything.
This would require me to have or be involved or any impact on, on my side or the applicant, if what's going on?
So curb better sidewalk would be on the south side of that road?
Okay. And then, and just, I guess, would that be the same thing going all the way here down to the tracks with what, and I, and I guess it's going to be, for whatever goes from the other part of, is going to be discussed later?
Yes, it's the next item.
Okay, so...
But yes, there'll be required, there'll be required improvements along 89.
And still, that wouldn't affect anything on my way down to the tracks or going that way until the time that we decide to do anything there? So is the, on that next situation, Scott, industrial manufacturing and general commercial, so is it kind of going to be the same thing for both of those parcels, per se?
So in this case, this section here, you can see, is what the current, what this application is requesting to rezone to general commercial.
That we're talking about right now.
But everything else then would be, is proposed for the industrial and light.
Okay. Right, those are just the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did receive, I think, two letters. One, I emailed to you and included a copy, and then another one was actually sent to Aaron, and we provided that to you.
The one is from Julian Cow, and the other one is addressed by five different citizens. Anyone else like the public comment?
Hi, my name is Brad Hanson. I just live 2400 south on the east side, three, three houses up. So I was just curious on the, you guys said that it was a kind of a dead space... So I was just curious on the, you guys said that it was a kind of a dead space. And I'm just saying I disagree with that. I'm just saying between the commercial, industrial. I think there's a lot of houses down there. You look to the north, there's a big subdivision. A lot of houses right against the, oh, rural tracks. And so I think that's really a possibility for you, single family homes or, you know, families, homes and stuff. So anyway, and it's also a home right there. They mentioned that, they don't know what to do with, like, the house. I mean, I don't know, like you say, the house had some fire damage. I don't know why they couldn't fix that up. People require to have insurance or it could be fixed up. And also, I mean, is it a possibility to have a gas station right there in general commercial? Is that on the list?
It is a permitted use, yeah.
Okay, so maybe, I mean, in my mind, I see that, hey, you know, he just barely acquired the property. It's a moneymaker. I can put a gas station or whatever makes the most amount of money. Why wouldn't you go that route? So in my mind, I don't think you see a nice Park City building. Park City has a stipulation of being, you know, high density homes. So, like you say, you're not willing to do it. A stipulation on a certain degree, you know, it's all been rural. It's been rural forever. It's been farms and stuff. That's the reason why, I mean, everyone's gonna say that. That's the reason why you're out here. But, you know, I don't want a gas station right down in Stone, gas trucks right there. Especially out in the middle of that place. That's what I have to say.
So just to clarify, I want to make sure, and I assume that most of your neighbors in your area kind of feel the same way.
I don't know. I haven't talked to them much, but.
Well, just once. So you guys would be okay if it was rezoned from A two to something more higher density and houses were put in there? I just want to make sure that's what you're saying.
Well, I wouldn't say more high density houses. I would be okay with having single family homes, some two acre lots.
That's A two.
A two.
That's how it would zone right?
That's what, yeah, so that's what I would say. That's what I'm saying. I would rather keep.
You're recommending C two and subdivision for two acre lots?
Right, that's what I would recommend. I mean, you get a lot of, I mean, there's pretty much nothing to the south of it. I mean, that's the last house on the west side all the way down pretty much down to the canyon. So I would say leave it at A two. And you have a small little, I mean, you can't, maybe you could put a gas station on the one acre lot. I don't know. Seems pretty tight to me, but, which I know, but if you change it that big, you could put a gas station. You could put a whole lot of things on there. There's just going to change. And you said it wouldn't change it drastically. Well, how does sheep farm to a gas station or not drastically, in my mind?
I don't think it would be a gas, there's already one approved on sixteen hundred South.
Right, I know. Well, there's, there's so many matter of traffic.
Maybe a Wendy's or something else that's twenty persons running around.
Creates traffic, creates noise, creates. Anyway, so that's my concern. So I mean, I understand that, you know, I live here, that owner probably doesn't live here. You know, my concern is, hey, there's a lot of traffic. I bought here because I'm getting away from Springfield, I'm getting away from Oregon and Provo. You know, everyone sees that's where it's going, your eyes, but look at all the residential building right, like crazy right here. So in my mind, I have to keep it.
Okay, thanks Brett.
Do you all, oh, it's her again. Hi, I'm Karen McQuiggins and I live in Mapleton. I live down near this. And I just want to appeal again to you to think very carefully about what you're going to allow to happen in Mapleton. We live in Mapleton. We don't live, eh, I don't know, in the middle of Emery County where we can't get big three Wal-marts within ten minutes of us. We have every fast food store. We have every brand of gas within ten minutes of us. And Nora is coming to Springfield. It's mandatory every day. We're not so isolated that we have to bring this to Mapleton. And, you know, I live, I have seven acres and so, you know, obviously you know my bias is towards something like that. But I'll tell you that I have lived in a neighborhood in the middle of Provo, a small neighborhood. Parked in about hospital plant and I loved it. I lived in a million and a half dollar condo with eight hundred units in our condo complex gated community. Pool, most beautiful pool you've ever seen, and I loved it. I did get tired of having people right next to me and always smelling what they were cooking and hearing that. But I loved it. It's a beautiful way to live. I lived in a neighborhood that would probably be a typical one-third acre neighborhood. And I lived in a neighborhood where the houses were more like on an acre or an acre and a half, or a half acre or an acre. And I loved it. I liked every place I lived. But then this is where I came to be my last place. And I wanted to have more space. I'm not telling people that they're wrong if they want to live in a condo because there's a lot of good things that happen in condos. I'm not telling people they're wrong if they want to live in a neighborhood, one-third acre houses. But they are all around us. From the Point of the Mountain to Santa Quinn, it's all around us. There are condos going up on every exit in Paeson. It's not like people don't have the chance to live in a condo if they want to live in a condo. But this, this rural experience is going away. It is going away fast. And I can't right now move to the middle of Emery County or Kane County or one of those places where it's really rural because I still need, my husband used to work and he needs to get to his job. My daughter needs to get to her school. So I can't move away. I feel like this is our last little part of a place where we can actually have. If I was the queen of Mapleton, there would probably never be another thing built here that wasn't on two acres. It would be a house. Because yes, I know that I can't require people to continue to farm their land and they can sell their land. We're not responsible. You're not responsible. I'm not responsible. None of people are responsible for what property owners earn when they sell their land. We're responsible for the fact that we live here and we're gonna keep living here, we hope, and we want to live here and we want to have a certain quality of life. And so anybody, like eventually, my daughter will sell our property. And I don't feel that it's your responsibility to make sure that she gets tens of millions of dollars for it. If she sells it as a one-house unit, it's gonna be an increase for her because the property value is gonna go up in Mapleton. If she subdivides it into two lots and sells two, three and a half acre building lots, she's gonna make a lot of money. You know what a building lot costs in Mapleton. So we're not responsible to say, well, this farmer has a hundred acres and he deserves this. He deserves to sell it or his heirs deserve to sell it. And if he sold it for fifty building lots, his kids would have plenty. We're not responsible to make sure that every developer or every descendant makes a ton of money. We're just responsible to make this a good place for us to live. And making these things higher commercial, higher density, that's everywhere. You can drive ten minutes and live like that and have a perfectly happy life. But for the people that still want a little rural in their life, it's encroaching on us. We can see it's going away. And I really hope that you will think about that and that you will hold this little piece of this kind of lifestyle precious.
Please Karen.
Hi, I'm Chad Cornaby. I have a property just across the street from the proposed property. And mine is zoned general commercial. I think that Scott had his, just on the corner, isn't it already, zoned general commercial? I mean, this is one spot, yeah. I, for one, I mean, I don't want a gas station or a fast food place. And I don't think that's what they're proposing, you know, is to have something like that. But I do think that, you know, nicer buildings like he was proposing would be a nice thing right there. I think with the smaller, you know, the general, the other light industrial buildings, as long as, as long as there's a stipulation, you know, if they're like Abbey Business Park, I mean, they're great. I mean, they're beautiful buildings. But I also think that the taxes in Mapleton are way too high, you know, and they keep going up. And isn't it the businesses that will help bring it down? I mean, once the businesses are in there, they will help with that somewhat. So that's all I wanted to say.
So Chad, just generally, I just want to make sure we've got a feel of your comments. Generally, you're in support of this option?
Yeah, if it's going to change, I love the farm. The farm is the best thing, you know. I've never had a problem with the farm. I don't care how it looks, you know. I love the farm. But I, if it's got to change, I would rather have, you know, commercial buildings in there that would be, you know, need. And I don't want a gas station. I don't want, I don't want anything like that. But, you know, the other buildings are fine with me. So, thanks.
I'm P D D R. I live on twenty-six hundred South. I think it begins today, so my mouth isn't looking quite right. I'm a little lumpy, so I hope I can get my thoughts together. I feel we need to protect our A two zones. Sorry, I'm getting emotional, but that's all we're doing. It is changing at all. And you can't even find a place to buy two acres and build you a house to have cows unless it's some big huge lot that requires you to build a big massive house. This, if you left it as A two and they divided it to A two acres, people could do little farms, have their little farms and keep the place rural. All we're doing is always changing zoning. I think the developer, the owner who has purchased it, I think he's trying to get it rezoned. It will be worth more money so he can sell it or he can do something with it. And he's trying to get all of this done before the general plan is looked at again. Because of the general plan and mischanges where it isn't commercial, it was supposed to be great on Highway eighty-nine because even in the instruction stuff, it said Highway eighty-nine, we don't want it to be a line of commercial. Well, that's what it's turning into is a line of commercial. And it's just, it's taking all of the road deal away. And the south of Mapleton is the only place where we still have our little farms that we still want to farm. And I think we need to protect the A two. And with his plan of this is what it could possibly be, but it's probably gonna change, I don't think he should agree to change any kind of zone with, you know, the app and a plan of what it is that they want to do. I think they're just trying to get this changed to the zoning before the general plan is done. And that's, I mean, I don't think it's that messy. It's been cleaned up quite a bit since Scott's been moving stuff out. Lots of people take pictures there by those white farms because they're nostalgic. It's farming and that's what Mapleton is. And I think we need to protect that while we just keep rezoning A two. And pretty soon, you're not gonna be able to have two acres with a nice little house where you can have your cows, your horses and your chickens. And that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Thanks, Amy. Anyone else?
My name is John DeVos. I live just about right across the street. It's more for the South Inness Project. And one of my worries is, in a morning from labor work, I can send my garbage sometimes in ten minutes to get out of driveway because of the whole traffic coming out of the canyon. And you have a lot more commercial wheel and have a lot more traffic on the road. And people don't know how to drive to speed limit on the road. I mean, if there was a cop sitting there, they could be sitting there all day long. We could take it to the store, people then. Because they're gonna face him down that road. And that's one of my reasons. I like rural areas. I have three point six, seven acre private. And I would like to split that in half. We have seventy-nine acres. And I would like to put a house on the other half. And I'm told I can't do that because I have four acres. They want me to do subdivision. I don't want a subdivision. I don't want any acres. What's the difference? What if you have four acres or three point six, seven acres just in half?
It's the two acre minimum requirement. Rounding designation requires a two acre minimum. So that's why if you had four, you could split it in two.
Oh, I would still like to do it, but I'd have to do a whole subdivision.
Oh, so you'd have to rezon to it. You wouldn't be able to keep an A two in your subdivision. You'd have to rezon to a different classification.
I wasn't told that. I just told them.
Yeah, I think.
I spoke to your wife this afternoon.
Right.
You have to do a subdivision because, in your case, because you would be dividing land from one parcel into two. And by definition, that is a subdivision. So that's why you have to do a subdivision. You would be trying to create additional building lot. And that is a subdivision.
Do I have to put more than one building lot in there?
Do you have to put more than one? From, you could keep it the same or you could create as many as one additional.
All the two are split in half, but one house.
Right, that's a subdivision, so you'd have to do improvements.
Probably the best thing to do is to come in and sit down and talk to us. It's a deciding call.
But you could, just really quick, you could use a T V R and not have to rezon.
That's, and I mentioned that to his wife.
I just want to make sure that's clear for us. Okay, anyone else?
Sorry, I was giving you a chance. I just wanted to give my, my name's Chris Benson. I live just east on twelve west and probably one or two south right there. I mean, since I could drive, I've always, you know, made my way over into Mapleton. I used to live in Provo. Just to be able to take a look at the nice open fields and, you know, the spacious area. It's just a beautiful place. About five years ago, I finally got the chance to move to Mapleton. Was able to afford a house, picked it up. It's been great. I loved it. I just hope that everybody keeps in mind that the spirit of Mapleton is openness. It's having that space. It's having your neighbors close, but not too close. You're allowed to go within the, be able to enjoy yourself on your own property. Be able to go watch the sunset, you know, just enjoy the outdoors kind of space around. A lot of the builds going on down just concerns me that we're gonna lose that pretty quick. We already are. I just hope that it can slow down at some point. I mean, if it has to change, it's gotta change. I understand that as well. But, I mean, with the proposed changes here, I'm with the others that have spoke about non-loning. Something that's gonna bring high traffic. A lot more people into that area. I've got kids and I want to keep them away from the highway. But at the same time, I don't want to, I really would rather not see like bright lights of a Del Taco radiating in my windows of my house all my life, you know, some of those lights. So if it did have the change, I would hope that it would be like professional plowers or something like that. But at the same time, I just hope everyone can keep in mind keeping space open and the spirit of Mapleton alive as much as we can. So, thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Richard Dark. I live on twenty-six hundred South. I'm the one that tries to keep up the deed. As I listened to the applicants proposing and looked at it here, what I saw is a lot of lack of clarity. I don't believe nobody's proposing other than the zoning change. Which says to me, he's interested in enhancing his property value by getting the zoning change upfront before he decides that he wants to do it. That's the good problem with that. That may not be, isn't him, but that's certainly a good spot to make. And I would, I would hope that those who make the decisions would look at that and consider the fact that until there's some kind of somewhat concrete proposal being made, that we wait on making the zoning change. that we wait on making the zone change.
Thank you. Anyone else? Once we close public comment, we will last eight comments. This is your chance. Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment and hold it to the discussion between the commissioners.
Sean, do you have a picture of the general plan? I just, I want to clarify something. I think it also pains us to rezone. We all moved here for a reason as well, similar to all the reasons that you wrote here. And I think that, I don't want to have the perception of that we just rezoned for the sake of rezoning. That's not the case at all. We have to take a long-term strategic approach when we think of the growth of Mapleton. And if it was up to all of us, we would throw a lock on the door and say, wherever the population is right now, that's what it is. But unfortunately, that's unrealistic. And so, when we think about these, the property owners and the property rights and the growth that's inevitable, I really like this section within staff's notes just outlining what is the scope of the general plan. It says, "The general plan land use map is meant to demonstrate the city's long-term vision of how properties may develop over time. When a request for a rezone is submitted, the general plan is intended to help determine whether the request is consistent with the long-term vision for development in a particular area." So, that's really what we're doing. We're not trying to just rezone for the sake of rezoning. We're trying to manage the growth of Mapleton in a strategic manner. So, although we can't keep everybody out, we try to get strategic in what zones we allow and what are the designations within that zone. And also, what are the architectural requirements within that zone? So, you may not have, you may have a commercial zone, but that commercial zone is going to have strict limitations around, is it going to be all stucco? No. Is it going to be all brick? No. We have these really stringent architectural design standards. And that's, those are ways that we're trying to, A, maintain the feel and the caliber of Mapleton while also recognizing that growth is inevitable and we just have to manage it. I think Mr. Cornby mentioned that the tax rate is high, so we're trying to offset that. And so, I just, I don't want us to think that we have our, you know, our blinders on with regard to this. We're trying to see things from a much larger perspective. And when we look at it in isolation, that's when we start to get television and we get lost. And so, we sympathize with you. I'm not saying one way or another, we sympathize with you. I hope that's apparent. We want Mapleton to maintain the feel that we all came here for. And we're just trying to do that from a very holistic perspective. So, I apologize for the rant. I got on my soapbox, but that was just my thoughts based on public comment. I really appreciate your comments.
You have thoughts, concerns, questions?
Yes, a question and a point of clarification, so maybe Sean can help elaborate on this. But a while back, the city sent out emails and there was a big survey for the commercial standards for Mapleton to correct. That only included the general commercial zone, that did not include the industrial zone, correct?
Yeah, just the commercial zones.
So, if the applicant were to keep the existing zoning, which is up on the screen now, that whole piece is owned industrial, there is no requirements to meet any of the design standards.
This is general plan.
This would be general plan. So, they would still have to come back for a rezone just to keep it what the general plan is, which from our point of view, as long as application meets, the general plan is really, it's an easier, I guess, application process. But where he's asking for the front piece to be general commercial, he's actually, he's going to be required to put more restrictions and conditions on, but he can't put on that piece of property. So, I mean, from a commercial point of view, yeah, it may increase the property amount, but he is also required to meet those same standards.
Yeah, my interpretation is if you kept it all industrial, there's far less requirements associated with what kind of buildings and what the design of those buildings would look like.
So, I grew up on Highway 89 in a small farming community in Utah County in Linden on a three-quarter acre lot. And we watched that farming community turn into Linden now. And I think there's logical places to put commercial. And Highway 89 is one of those logical places. It's a main traffic flow. And I think that requiring the general commercial, like some of the other commissioners have stated, would protect the aesthetic. So, I'm in favor of that rezone to the general commercial frontage.
So, my overall feeling is the benefits of this rezone, based on what we've seen from the possibilities, based on what we've seen from surrounding, general planning zone, would be a benefit. I understand that the rezoning of that frontage commercial would actually impose more, higher restrictions on it. I would generally be in favor of it with stipulations that we could put, while at least recommend putting the conditions on that commercial that it would be restricted to businesses that aren't 24 hours. I think that would be a minimum condition that I would like to see. But generally, overall, we are right in the middle of starting a general plan over. And I just cannot bring myself to say, okay, the general plan currently, right now, as it sits, our forefathers designated this area clearly as industrialized manufacturing. But because we're right, right at the beginning of a review overhaul of the general plan, I'm really in favor of just saying, timeout. Let's keep it A2 for right now. If the current owner wants to do something with that, awesome. But let's push through this general plan review and see what we come up with as far as the community as a whole, Mapleton as a whole wants to do. If they continue to feel like, yeah, that's the great area for industrial, awesome. My personal feelings are, yeah, I think that wedge shape lends itself to industrial. I mean, I don't think if we kept those 2 acre lots, that it would be able, that it would be very feasible and that a lot of people would buy those lots right next to that track and right which is between the 8 and 9. But because we're in the position we're at right now as a community, I don't think I'd do it without getting A2 rezoned. I mean, it's a few months, it's a year. And let's consider we're not obligated to the owner to jump on this. It doesn't matter. You want to do it right now. Well, I don't think any of us have a crystal ball, but let's say we pump the brakes on this, we review, like, what do we think could change? Do you think it would remain A2? I think it goes R2?
The review process that's going on is being done by an outset firm that looks at communities as a whole. And looks at designations and work, commercial work, industrial work, residential and traffic flow with 2400 South continuing towards Maple Mountain, High School and the Spanish Fork and Highway 89 connecting into Highway 6. Just from the experience with my background, I think it's going to stay industrial. I think they may even recommend a red commercial zone all the way where it meets the pie shift down the bottom. Putting the brakes on it, we may come back and they may have that same recommendation. But as the landowner, in this case, he purchased the property probably with the intent, knowing that it was owned industrial. He has his rights to keep it industrial. Even though the community may vote during this whole zone change to make it A2, it is owned industrial, so it is his right to keep it industrial. Where it ends up, six months, a year from now after this review.
Isn't it zoned A2? That's just the whole.
The general plan has it industrial.
Okay, that's the general plan that's being ready to be changed.
But it's not so zoned.
Correct, but as a landowner, he purchased it knowing that the general plan has it industrial.
But he still, he purchased it as it is currently zoned.
But you don't purchase land as it's currently zoned. You purchase a property for future, for future growth. And the future of that property shows it as industrial. He's within his rights to rezone it as industrial. Whether it was on industrial, commercial, A1, that's the landowner.
To just kind of help on this discussion a bit. So, the zoning obviously is what the law of the land is now, right? This is the standard. The general plan is, it's not binding. The intent is to say, this is what we envision it to provide assistance to the commission and the council. It's also meant to provide predictability to the property owner and neighboring property owners to understand, okay, this is where it looks like the property is going. I said that, the commission and the council has legislative ability to, you know, you have pretty broad discretion when deciding to change zones. So, the general plan clearly is what we look to, right? That's typically the standard. If you look to that standard and you determine, hey, it may not reflect, based on these conditions accurately, what we really want for this, you do have discretion to either deny it or make a change or have conditions. So, that's just to kind of help frame that, right? The general plan is the guideline, but it doesn't mean that a by right that the property owner gets dissolved. It's intended to provide predictability, but not necessarily. It's not guaranteed, otherwise there wouldn't be a rezone process. If that helps, just. So, what's the backstory on that little general commercial? Right in that corner. And I know that's not within this subject property.
Would you like to answer that for you?
Sure.
I'm Snow's daughter, but do not take any stock in it. That was a mill that made pellets. It was sold commercially, it was only provided. And that was grandfathered in for 40 years.
Okay. There's a, it's hard to see, but there's a big.
Well, that piece there too?
There's a big building back here. That's the one he's talking about.
That one there? That was proposed by Brian to possibly put a shop in and that was never going to apply. There was never any real reason to do a shop in at the time. At the time. They got some.
All right, change it. I know that's outside of this discussion.
It is not. She wants to zone as a patient.
The whole piece is zoned.
Yeah, the property lines.
It kind of pertains, but we're about to do that. And I think together, I see this as an area that's going to be a total thing.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think I agree with Commissioner Lewis on this. I just think, based on the fact that it's a highway, I think that lends itself to commercial. And I also like the stipulation of we want to put in no 24-hour businesses. So, I think, so no 24-hour businesses coupled with the more strict architectural standards associated with commercial zoning, I think that's somewhat of a compromise. And I think, just, I think industrial is the shoe that fits in that back, that back little stallion. So, I would recommend approval to City Council of the rezone as it's currently constituted.
Has it, sorry, has it's verified by you or with the stipulation?
Oh, yes, thank you. With the stipulation that any business along the general commercial, within the general commercial zone, would be unable to operate a 24-hour business. So, yes, that's a motion. It's a really sloppy motion, but that's why we pay you all so much good money. Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's a all-favor.
Aye.
I'm going to vote aye for the reasons I stated before. I'd like to see this general plan reviewed before you agree to the motion. Okay, moving on to item number four.
Item number four, I am actually going to recuse myself on this. But I don't have any ownership on this property, but the company I work for is potentially involved in building one of the proposed solution or the proposed concept. And so, I'm just going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
So, just quickly, on that note with three commissioners, it would have to be unanimous three-o vote for approval or denial. If it can't come to a decision, it would be continued until we have a vote.
So, it couldn't be a two-in-three vote, correct?
It'd have to be three-o.
Okay, so, item number four is condition of a request for a rezone approximately 10.9 acres of property located approximately 2680 South, Highway 89, to industrial and manufacturing. And we're going to have Ron and I.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, we have 10.9 acres. This is located directly south of the parcels that we were just talking about, which consisted of Olson's sheep farm. Currently, that property also is owned A2, with the exception of the weird little chunk that Commissioner McLean made note of. Historically, this property has been generally vacant farmland. It does have one home and two large outbuildings. And the two large outbuildings are located within that aforementioned commercial area. In 2016 and 17, CNR Stone World, which was located a little bit north of here, where just a little bit north of the commercial areas on 1600, 1600 South and 1600 West, they were located up in that area. They started to move their operations to this site. In March 2017, we sent our first notice that that was a problem with the city with the current orderments. The first notice was, hey, you know, we noticed you're moving these things and that's not going to work. And then a little later in the year, we sent a stronger notice saying, well, you know, this isn't working the way that it is. You can't have outdoor storage in this A2 zone. So, the applicant, after, in response to these notices of violation, is making a request to change the zone from A2 to this I and M1 to industrial and manufacturing. This zoning application does prepay the current moratorium. The general plan, as mentioned in the last one, does indicate that the I and M is appropriate for this area. And the applicant, as much as anything, has expressed an intent to bring this property into compliance. The zoning change alone doesn't bring it into compliance, but it's the first step in the process of getting into compliance. If indeed the zoning change is approved. The concept for this one is, I think, a little bit firmer than the last, although it is merely a concept at this point. The existing home would be turned into a house office. The 1440, there would be a 1440 square foot right there. This doesn't translate very well, unfortunately. A 1440 square foot sports facility building.
14,000?
That's what I meant, 14,000. 14,400. There would be a two-unit building here. I said that the property wasn't in compliance. There are actually two different businesses running here. One is the CNR Stone World and the other is, I've forgotten the name of the business, but essentially, it's a landscaping company that keep their heavier equipment here and some of their materials as well. So, the proposal would be to have a two-unit building here that would be the offices for those two different. for those two different, uh, businesses, uh, or future businesses as things moved out, moved in. And then, and then the, the applicant also wants to continue with the outdoor storage. The outdoor storage is only plausible with the, um, with the buildings and with improvements in addition to the rezon, it's going to have to be improvements. These uses that they propose are all plausible if the property is reasonable. That this concept is preliminary, uh, but they're, and like I said before, the rezon is the first step toward compliance. Uh, in evaluating this, uh, as we've kind of gone over, the, the general plan is the long-term vision. Rezon should be consistent with the general plan. The general plan indicates that the proposal is appropriate. Uh, and the site is, given the narrowness of the site and the highway on one side, the, and the, uh, the, uh, tracks on the other, uh, it's, it's arguable that it's logical for industrial and manufacturing. With all these things said, uh, the staff is recommending approval. But because the property is currently in violation of condition, we have a number of special conditions that if you're of the mind to recommend approval, um, that these special conditions be applied. The applicant, uh, and these special conditions are in your packet, and so I'll just try and hit the high spots of these. The applicant has a, has a deadline of Feb-, the, near the end of February for submitting a site plan. Has, if, if he doesn't hit that deadline, then he needs to basically take this property back to the state it was in before he bought it, which is to say, get all of that stuff out of there and return it to pasture land effectively by March 28th. The applicant has another deadline, assuming that, um, the site plan is approved, uh, at the end of August of next year, uh, to, um, install landscaping, screening, parking, and all the other things that are going to be included in that. If that, if there's, then there's a deadline a month after that. If that doesn't happen, if the applicant doesn't follow through on that, to again, have everything cleared off. And then the last one is the, is an indication that the project can be phased. There could be future development areas, but the future development areas, if the applicant chooses to use those, would have to bring, be taken back to that effectively pasture land. In other words, you couldn't call something a future phase in order to forego putting on improvements and then continue to use it for this commercial purpose. If you're going to tell it's, tell it's a future phase, then you need to use it as undeveloped land. And if that's said, are there any questions? I'll be happy to try and.
Just a really quick clarification, these stipulations, these dates, the requirements, these are, these are the staff's proposals.
They are indeed. They are indeed. Uh, we have, when we sent the, the notice of violation, we gave him a deadline as to when he had to make an application for, for this rezon. If this rezon is not, is not approved, then we'll have to adjust fire from there. And, and, you know, we'll have to kind of talk about that internally as to what that consists of and talk with the applicant as well as in terms of what that consists of. So, you know, there's no pressure one way or the other, but this is, among other things, the applicant trying to make it, I think.
When, when was the first warning issued? How long ago was it?
Uh, it would have been March of 2017.
So, just over two years ago.
Yeah, so, yeah. We try to, when we do code enforcement, we try to work toward getting things into compliance. We don't, our goal is not to punish people, we just want to get things into compliance. And so we try to work with people to, to bring it into compliance as long as they're willing to move that direction.
Okay.
These are specific requirements and specific days of day. Anybody agrees on these days of day?
Well, I don't, I don't know that the applicant agrees these, these conditions, the same staff report that was sent to you was sent to the applicant. And because it is a code enforcement violation, there's a certain amount of setting timelines, setting reasonable timelines for compliance. And I think, I think even a certain amount of challenging, you know, somebody who's out of compliance to not string this long forever. Let's, let's get into compliance.
Are the requirements, the architectural requirements for general commercial more stringent than industrial manufacturing?
They are.
Correct.
They are. The one, the one thing, the one thing I would mention is that the applicant intends to do this outdoor storage. And the outdoor storage is not allowed in the general commercial zone.
I think it is.
Um, there is, there are two different kinds of storage that are, that are defined. The outdoor storage is what would be allowed in the, the INM1. It's a different kind of storage where you can only use 15% of the site in the general commercial.
So outdoor storage is like, that equals paving, that, 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 how do you allow in a general commercial?
That's correct. Uh, there is storage allowed, but it's more minor, like, you know, having, uh, having a little bit of storage out back for, uh, um, you know, somebody who fixes cars or for, you know, for Walmart storing their, you know, their, their trash containers and things like that. You know, it's limited to 15% of the site.
So it would be unreasonable to request that they do a general commercial along the Highway 89 corridor frontage to match what we just recommended for the next adjacent property?
From the aerial view, most of the outdoor storage from what I can see is, is against the tracks, not necessarily against that.
It would probably be somewhat. Probably somewhat, um, challenging, but it's not necessar-, that's not necessarily an argument against or for it. Um, I would, I would, I wouldn't recommend doing the whole site, but the frontage, that might be a workable.
I think that would maintain the consistency of what we're, what our vision was for the other property. And if we added that as a stipulation to this, I think.
Rather than me speaking for the owner in his interest, that.
Rather than, I mean, I like, uh, Rich's idea of keep it consistent, rather than, uh, if the applicant did not want to make it general commercial on the frontage, could you put restrictions on those outbuildings, the sports facility and the two outbuildings that didn't meet the commercial standards? Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you come out now, let's talk. Members, please say your name.
My name's Brett Robinson. So, do you have some questions?
So what do you think of that proposal, uh, general commercial along Highway 89 frontage to maintain continuity, uh, with the adjacent property? And it would also add a, a more stringent, um, architectural requirement? That it may look like the rest of the properties rather than?
Well, from an aerial vision, you can see red, you know, but as far as a building standpoint, you've got an offset from the railroad tracks and you've got an offset from Highway 89. So you can't really grab commercial and go right into that triangle. And so I think that's why the win industrial is to get, you know, outdoor, you know, just like industrial, light industrials and storage, like what I've been told from the city is Palat's Rock would fit into that criteria. And so I've been running a business there out of compliance. I've been sent several letters. And I just came to the city or council to see what I can do to continue to run my business there. And they just constantly told me, you've got to get a rezon. The master plan is industrial. Uh, just stick with the master plan and you'll be fine. And so that's what I'm trying to propose is to get a, you know, get a rezon.
So the existing home that's on, is that the lot home?
Yeah. So the lot home right now is, you know, A2. And the, the owner that lives in that home is here, and I don't think she's real happy that it trains with right in her backyard. And so I'm proposing that to be kind of an office site for the stone yard. Another building to be built to the south of that lot home as a, you know, indoor facility for like a sports training facility. And then a little bit further south, have a, a kind of like a, a dual office for a landscaper office and then either like a stone yard or some overhead bay for masonry or, you know, outfit that way. But with the triangle, the industrial would allow me to just stack Palat's Rock and go into that triangle with, limited with the building codes by the railroad track and by Highway 89.
Keep in mind that industrial does have screening standards, so there would be landscaping.
We can, we can maintain like the look and feel of the Highway 89 corridor.
Yeah, so you'll have a consistent, you'll have a consistent look with, with landscaping sidewalk for better along that. And then the buildings would be a different, potentially, you know, a, a sports type facility is probably going to be a little different compared to, than something like your St. Candy Medical.
But a, a sports facility is probably a metal building?
Yeah. Or masonry, maybe a mason, block building. But I mean, what I've been told is you're approaching into Mapleton and that's kind of the first thing you see. And so, um, you know, to have a building kind of off that corner a little bit and then have the nice landscaping, whether it's a berm that's six feet tall that, you know, and then the property drops down in, um, like just, you know, where Echo's paving is, that's kind of the front that I envisioned the front of the facility being, you know, where you can pull off and get one, uh, on-off ramp from U Dock right there. You'll have the facility there and then everything going left of the facility and to the house will be landscaped. And so it'll kind of help hide the industrial out storage. And so I'm just here to try and get into compliance and hope to get a rezon change. And the deadlines are new to me. Um, these parameters that were set, you know, on March 28th, you know, they're new to me. I'm willing to try my hardest. Is that up for negotiations if those dates are not met?
They were in the, they were in the staff report that I sent to you on Tuesday.
Okay.
But as of this, we can't, you hadn't been given those dates prior to this?
No, because this isn't the, like I said, this is a process and we're not even in compliance. And so in making those, those conditions, we're looking at, okay, if this is approved, then these are the conditions, this is the next step, and then the next step, the rezoning, the first step. You can, you can give, give, um, different conditions, but I think it's worthwhile to keep in mind that we, you know, that it's two and a half years since the first notice. We can talk.
Good. Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns to staff before we go through the talk? Okay, we'll go ahead and open up comments, numbers apply.
Hi again, Brett Hanson. I live, uh, three houses up from 21 Greenport, southeast. And I was just, you know, kind of the same things, I guess, that, um, I was hoping it would stay A2. But I have a swimming pool business, um, that I own. I do fiberglass swimming pools. So I was thinking, I was just going to dump a lot of my fiberglass swimming pools on my property, two and a half acres, and then just kind of try to rezon that to see if I, if that's okay. You know, the neighbors might not be too happy with me for having these fiberglass pools. I'll just stash them in my pasture. But I mean, so I mean, if you say just trying to get into compliance, I don't, I don't buy that. I think it's, you know, you're, you're, you know, you know what you're going to do and just like you said, you know, you know what kind of property you're buying, have all the property, knowing that it's, I have to have two acres to have. I didn't buy the property knowing that all the general plans is, I'm going to make money here in about 10 years. I wanted a farm, I wanted to have my horses on there. So I mean, like you said, the zoning is now, it's A2. Look at it. You're going to do commercial all the way down, I say do commercial all the way down. That's my thoughts on it.
Thanks, Brett.
Brett Hanson again, I'm just trying to cross the road. And on, on this, what we're looking at here, you've mentioned that, that there's two businesses that are currently in there landscaping and then the stone works. Is that, is that all from this, does the same people have them or are there two different owners putting?
So the ownership, the ownership is all, uh, in Mr. Robinson's name.
Okay.
He has, uh, for lack of a better word, or, or knowing exactly what the relationship is, leased, uh, the, the southern portion to another business owner. I don't know exactly what their, their deal is, you know, between them, but that's effectively what's happening.
Okay, I, I just wasn't sure, it sounded like there were two different owners running, that he's going in there.
Two different entities, but only one owner.
Only one owner still. So, but that is, is all illegal, what's going on there now? Just curious?
That, under the current zoning, yes.
It is, it is, okay.
And even under, even, even if the zoning were, were approved, there still needs to be a lot of improvements that would happen before we'd be in, in compliance.
Okay. And then I guess my, my question is then on the, on the, is it, is it type of a sports park? Is it a proposal to put in for a sports facility, like an enclosed building?
I, I don't, I don't have any specifics on what it would be, but yes, an enclosed sports facility of some sort.
Training type of a thing, maybe?
Could be.
It's something similar to what Spanish Fork is across from their sports park, possibly?
That's theoretically possibly.
General public is what, is what it's proposed to be able to do, is, or?
I'm, I'm, I'm a loss as to what the specifics are on that.
I just wondered what, because I.
Yeah, but I think that's a, I think that is, is something, something plausible that, that could be something like what's across from the sports park. Yeah, that's kind of what I would envision something like.
And then that would be for general use to lease out to personnel for whatever, sports training or anything like that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know their specific plans, but yeah.
Well, I just haven't, you know, seen anything like that, so I was just curious as to what. Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot something I was going to say. Can you remind me about that sports park? Why, I'm curious, why would you put a sports facility right in the middle of, uh, two businesses? I don't, I mean, I, like you say, you don't know the words, but I just don't, like you said, I think it's all to, to get the rezon so then you can change it to get money. I don't think you're going to put a sports park, sports building. And there's maybe stipulation that you must put a sports, sports building in it, because if you, I mean, the sports park is in the middle of a park, you're going to get a lot of the residential's going to the park, playing on the grass, going and doing sports, but, you know, it's, I mean.
Well, just.
It's just an indoor building.
Just conceptually, when you look at them on Springville Main Street, it's right between storage units and other businesses. It's, it's like a, it's karate, polonies, kind of, kind of a gym, but it's kind of industrial building. That's kind of what I'm envisioning, I have no idea, but that's.
That's kind of what you're trying, that's, yeah, I didn't.
In my mind, that's kind of how it fits. That's how the.
Okay, I just, yeah, obviously I didn't know, because I'm, I'm thinking of like the Maple Mountain High School have that, have a huge indoor, um, football thing or something. That's what I'm envisioning, so maybe I, yeah, that's, to clarify.
Anyone else want to speak?
Uh, just one thing about a sports facility is it would generate tax dollars for the city. And so that is also why I'm trying to get into compliance for the business as well, for the stone yard, for sales tax. I have just a couple other business ideas for the city to generate tax dollars.
Maybe you could clarify, what, what is it? If, if, that's, that's not going to be a great big metal building, or is it going to be a great big metal building? Like what, Maple Mountain football?
So you've got Maple Mountain, it won't rent theirs out?
Right.
Um, if you go over to Spanish Fork, over by the soccer fields, they'll rent that one out.
Sure.
And so I've got four boys, I've got a lot of friends in Mapleton that were all sitting, kind of, driving from Mapleton and you've got to go to downtown Lehigh or you've got to go all the way over to Spanish Fork. And so one idea was to generate some tax dollars for the city and put a sports facility there. Indoor training, soccer, basketball. Couple people in Mapleton, they love baseball. And, and you can't rent the facility that Maple Mountain have there. So we would have the nets that would drop down and you could have practices. It definitely would not be a 24/7 hour business, so.
Size wise, how would you envision it compared to the Spanish Fork facility?
Um, like you mentioned, it's around 14,000 square feet.
So this is, this is similar to the size that they have in Spanish Fork?
Yeah, it's probably going to be a little less.
Pretty comparable?
Pretty comparable. So, and then you. or towards the other property south, create some parking, 'cause that's, one thing there is available land for parking. The other facilities are tight, people are parking on the roads, that'd be another concern. So.
So you envision that indoor facility would be similar to like some of the other facilities in Pleasant Grove and American Fork, where you can, individual teams can come rent sections of the facility rather than the whole facility, which may amount to less required to do as an organized team, whereas those other facilities, you have to be, you can rent out just a net cage area that's ten by twenty, or, or, there could be multiple, I mean, some of those facilities have over a hundred kids in there at one given time, so is that what you're envisioning on this facility?
Right, I don't know about a hundred kids, but...
You get three or four.
Yeah.
Baseball teams in there, does, does start to...
Well, and if you've got a basketball court on one side and there's three basketball hoops, you've got three games going on, and you do a Maple Mountain tournament, or, you know, for Pee Wee League, and, you know, we've just got a lot of kids in Mapleton. It's just an idea, but I like the...
I'm a sports guy, I'm a sports coach, I coach Maple Mountain, so adding something like this, I think would be great for the community. I think it's a good fit within the industrial zone. My condition would be to maybe dress up in front of it, sort of match with some of the commercial standards from Highway eighty-nine.
And the other reason why the industrial stopped before the house is just because of the log house and not continue to take the commercial through that area. That was the other reason that I've been advised, so that's kind of why I put the rezon in there.
Just, what are the building requirements offset off the railroad tracks? Is that offset?
About twenty-five feet.
Anyone else would like to make public comment?
Yeah, Dee Dee Dark. So I'm just curious, so the entrance to Mayleton Manor would be like a big metal building, like a fieldhouse of Maple Mountain High?
I don't think the entrance of Maple Mountain would be this. Further, further south, you have a huge, it's a brickwork development, would be the entrance to Mayleton, off Highway sixty-six.
Yeah, from the corner. Is that...
Don't know.
So, but it would be a big metal building?
Yeah, it depends on which direction you come in to Mayleton.
Just wondering.
Thanks Dee. Anyone else? Last call for vote down. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public comment and open it for discussion. So, my feelings are the same on this. I consider this is all kind of the same issue that I had on the last one. Me personally, I have a problem with what's being proposed, the athletic facility is, I believe is a good fit. I could totally see this going in, but it's just the timing, I just cannot, I agree, the rezon is right at, right at the beginning of the study on the general plan.
If we keep, continuing to the end of that six months of moratorium that we have on the rezon, just push it back, that compliance, that the city's had for years.
Exactly.
So this is a step in the right, in the right direction to get the landowner in compliance with the current restrictions of the zone. I think it's a good fit between...
I completely understand, and I, and that makes it really tough for me to say that, but... But in that case, I make a motion that we continue the side, 'cause we're not gonna come to a consensus then. So you're saying continue but not deny? But you're gonna vote against it and...
What does, what does that do to the applicant, though, the city's push to get it into compliance? We have, we have a zoning issue, I think we need to...
Well, if it gets continued, you get to the next meeting, so it's a two-week...
So there's really no, I forget what you're saying, Rich, but at the same time, continuing, and then there's, there's more members of the commission that may be...
There'll be more commissioners to vote, yeah.
Yeah, and then, then you have, you wouldn't have the three-year old vote.
Yeah, all right, let's continue this.
So what you, what you do is we close the public hearing, okay, so that we take the public comments, so this will come back, just for the additional commissioners.
Just, just for deliberation between the commissioners, I think that would be the back of the rezon.
Yeah, they'll have to, they'll have to listen to the minutes, so they've heard everything, they've read everything, and they're not upset anymore. So we will, you wouldn't wanna make a motion, which...
Right, it's already been a motion, what is it? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. That's, that's everything as far as our items for the meeting tonight.
Just one more quick thing for you. Just everyone, as you know, obviously we're working on our general plan update, just wanted to give you a quick... So, the city's general plan has a project website, it's rmapleton.org. If you wanna go to rmapleton.org, that's where we'll be posting all the information regarding upcoming hearings, opportunities to participate, decisions that have been made or actions that have been taken. So if you wanna follow that, rmapleton.org is the website.
We encourage everybody to be involved in this, because I think it's a great opportunity to be involved.
There you go, so that's, that's what the front homepage says, that has a tab for project status, that'll give you updates on what's happened, public meetings. There's an opportunity to sign up for an email list, if you wanna sign your name with your email or information. Really good thing, we're excited about this project, it's gonna be a good thing for the community.
I think this is awesome. Thank you so much.